Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We'll start out this morning with the invocation given by Supervisor Gould and the Pledge of Allegiance by Supervisor Gary Watson. Please join us.
Please join me in prayer. Lord, we thank you and praise you for this great nation that you've given us, Lord. We ask that you give wisdom to our leaders to lead it in the way that you would have it led. We pray for safety for our county workers, Lord. Some of them have dangerous jobs and we pray that they're kept safe during their workday, Lord, to go home to the loving arms of their families. Watch over our soldiers, sailors, airmen, and marines, Lord, our Coast Guard, and our Border Patrol. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you'll follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Angus is not here today with us. She's in Washington DC on county business, unless we have her on the telephone. Can you check? Okay, she is not on the phone, and hopefully she'll join us later, but if not, we do have a quorum. Okay, the Board of Supervisors may, by motion, recess into executive session to receive legal advice from the board's attorney on any item contained in this agenda pursuant to ARS 3843-1.03. So at this time, I'll ask for a motion and action to call for an executive session to be held on March 18th, 2019, at 9:00 AM for discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with ARS.
So move.
Second.
So we have a motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. I'll now go on and ask for a motion and action to approve waiving the reading in full of items presented for discussion, adoption, or approval at this meeting.
Second.
And motion and second. Motion is approved. Moving on to the official... Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, going on to the official business to come before the board. We'll begin with the discussion of pending or contemplated litigation claims and demand. Attorney Ryan Esplin.
Nothing to report to the board, thank you.
Thank you. Under committee and/or legislative reports, Supervisor Johnson, do you have anything for us this morning?
Yes, Madam Chair. The Lower Colorado River Multispeedy Conservation Program had a financial work group. Quad State handled that. Bill Lamb attended. The amount of money that's going to be put into the program this year will be $33,496,740. Of that, you know, people are concerned, the feds are about half and half with California, Arizona, Nevada. California paying $8 million, Arizona, Nevada $4 million each in a little bit. It appears all is on track and funding remains steady. Not surprised at the decrease in research. A little concerned about step backwards on monitoring. Project has been a paragon of virtue for getting done what they say, and the plans have been carried out as planned and committed. Some of the work may not be as successful as planned, and it needs to be watched. We also had a public lands use committee meeting back at Inaco Saturday. It appears that they're going to be now, instead of selling the horses and burrows, they're going to give you $1,000 to take them. So, claim that'll save them money, which it probably will, you know, so. We also had a management oversight group meeting, which is obviously tortoise-related. We had reports from BLM, Navy, California BLM, Nevada, all, everybody that came out. They have a 33% success on head-starting field releases now going in the one area in Clark County. San Diego Zoo is helping them, but the interesting part is, if you remember when Las Vegas did a deal where if you were... They didn't go in with us like in Quad State because they formed their own kind of HCP up there. And so every time somebody wanted to build, they had to pay hundreds of thousands of dollars to this group. And they put over 10,500 turtles into that group, and we don't really know where they are now, so. Kind of interesting. What else? I think that's about that all. And I'll submit the report on, or the financial report for Lower Colorado River. That's all, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Gould.
Yesterday, I spoke at a Right to Life event in Lake Abbeville City. It was well-attended. I spoke about Roe versus Wade because it was a little before my time. And so I did some research on that, how that really, the judicial gymnastics that effectively overturned bans on abortion. Other than that, that was the extent of it. Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Watson.
Thank you, Attorney Chairman Bishop. On February the 19th, immediately after our board meeting, Manager Hendricks and I jumped on a quick flight to Phoenix to make the hearing room for the Natural Resources on Energy and Water. Chairman Angus was also in attendance at that meeting, and we were there to support House Bill 2476, which will provide a study committee for local stakeholders in Mojave County and La Paz County to separately study our groundwater basins that are facing risk and to make recommendations on programs and policies for those basins. It was successful. We had a unanimous decision from that committee, and it was then taken forward. So we're making headway, and those that were sitting on the committee were very impressed with the thought of the local input being a time-honored Arizona tradition and value. And they thanked us very much for our expedient trip to Phoenix, which was a quick turnaround. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate all the travel that you have done back and forth to the state Capitol to support these issues. I can tell you that I chaired the CSA Medium Caucus meeting in Phoenix last week. Also attended the CSA Board of Directors meeting, as well as the Legislative Policy Committee meeting. And I wanted to take a moment to just recognize National Women's History Month. Yesterday, I noticed Supervisor Watson was at the Women in Making History Award Ceremony that I attended. This ceremony has been celebrated in Kingman every year since 1984, and currently we have over 400 amazing women that have been nominated to receive this prestigious award. So I just wanted to give kudos out to all of the women that won yesterday the award and the recognition and all those that came before them. And I think Supervisor Watson, your wife was also a recipient of this award and...
Yes, she was. Thank you.
All right. So that concludes my report. So we'll move on to the County Managers' Report. Do you have anything for us?
Madam Chairman, I have no report today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the February 4th, 2019 Board of Supervisors meeting minutes.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. At this point in our program, we'll open the call to the public. I have no one signed up to speak, but anyone that wishes to speak during the Call of the Public on matters not on the board agenda must fill out and submit to the clerk a Call to the Public Request to Speak form located in the back of the room. Since we don't have any, we'll just close the Call to the Public and move on to the consent agenda. The following items listed on the consent agenda will be considered as a group and acted upon by one motion with no separate discussion of said items unless a board member so requests. So I'll ask Supervisor Watson, would you like to pull any item?
Done this morning. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Item 21.
Supervisor Johnson?
Nothing, Madam Chair.
Okay.
And make a motion to approve consent minus item 21.
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Madam Clerk, will you take the role?
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gould?
Aye.
And Chairman Bishop?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, item 21. This was polled by Supervisor Gould. Authorize the Chairman of the Board of Supervisors to sign the attached letter in support of the City of Kingman's 2019 Arizona Commerce Authority Economic Strengths Project Grant for the purpose of the city improving portway between Olympic Way and Flightline Drive, transport drive between Portway and Mojave Airport Drive, and government way between Portway and Mojave Airport Drive in Kingman at the Airport Industrial Park, and future petitioning of the Board of Supervisors for consideration and acceptance into the Mojave County Road Maintenance Program as paved roads. I do have one person signed up to speak on this. Mr. ... Here we go. Mr. Bennett Bradley.
I thought that wouldn't be helpful.
Yeah, it's better.
Good morning, Bennett.
Good morning, Supervisor Bishop, Supervisor Gould, Watson, and Johnson. I did bring some maps of that, in case you guys didn't have that. Can I bring that up?
Mr. Bennett, also, if you could give us your name and address for the record.
Bennett Bradley, 1650 Franklin Drive. So we are in the process of submitting this grant to the Arizona Commerce Authority. It is a jobs-based grant that deals with roads, and the goal would be to, once the... If we are awarded the grant, we would then bring that back to the Board of Supervisors after we build the road and then petition it to be taken into the county maintenance. We've gotten these grants before when I was with the county, when we did the, out at the industrial park at I-40 in Griffith for a water infrastructure grant that was jobs-based. And so, you know, there's a good chance that we're going to be awarded this, but we'd definitely like to have your guys' support going into it because they're going to want to know that, once we build the roads, they're going to be able to be maintained long-term. So if there's any questions...
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Bradley?
Madam Chair, Mr. Bradley, is that industrial park located inside the corporate boundaries of the City of Kingman?
No, it is not.
But it's owned by the City of Kingman?
The portions of the properties out there are owned by the City of Kingman, but there are private businesses that own property as well. So we operate and manage the airport, and we also manage the industrial park, and we sell property. We work with the business out there to, as they go through any type of issues, we work with them. We also have the water in the sewer that we maintain out there.
Does this property, or this area currently abut the city limits of Kingman?
The industrial park?
Correct.
It is, I don't know how many miles, but it is maybe a couple miles away from the city limits.
I just find the whole thing kind of strange. I tried to do some looking back on the history of it. Actually, the industrial park belonged to the county at one time, and then it was given to the City of Kingman, which is, since the county's given Kingman this, it's curious that we're still responsible to maintain it when we gave it to somebody else.
Yeah, I can't speak to that. I mean, it was a long time ago, but those are county roads.
Yeah, this was 1980 stuff.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, it is in the county. The county currently maintains roads out there around the park and everywhere in that area.
Yeah, I just find the ownership structure
Yeah.
strange. Generally, when you give somebody something, you're not expected to then maintain it. You know, and I could give examples of common sense things, but it's government, and it doesn't always make common sense.
Is that it?
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
Supervisor Watson?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
How many jobs are at the industrial park?
So currently, we have, there's 2,205 full-time employees. I've got about 43 part-time employees and 246 temporary workers. That accounts for about $101 million payroll.
$101 million payroll?
Per year.
Per year?
Yeah.
Wow. Well, the last time I got that update, the numbers were a little bit lower, so we must be growing pretty well out there.
Yeah, we, right now, currently, I have two projects, two land sale projects. We've got about $300 million in potential capital investment projects into that area. And keep in mind, the, you know, the property taxes generated from that, just currently on what we have for land and the businesses that are out there, I want to say that's about $2,345,000. So 15 percent, or roughly 14.37% of that goes into the general fund, and that's about $337,000.
Thank you for updating those figures for me. Just my thoughts alone on this project are, it seems to me it would be a pretty reasonable investment to help support this item, simply for the fact of continued economic development. Is that how you see it, Mr. Bradley?
I do. I do.
So if we were to continue to enhance the park through our efforts, first impression's always the best, always the most important, as I recall. So if Mojave County were to continue to maintain those roads, would that help a great deal in your being able to present the park in a manner in which would induce more investment?
That's correct. When we take anybody out there to show them the property, when we get site selectors visiting, the better the park looks and is represented, the more likely, obviously, that we can potentially locate them.
Just one other statement I'd like to make is, several years ago, we, I was involved in the formation of KAMA, the Kingman Area Management Association.
Manufacturing, yes.
And we identified a number of problems, and the appearance of the park was number one on my list at that time. Are you getting cooperation from the companies and the buildings that own, the people that own the buildings and properties there? Are you getting much cooperation in them enhancing and beautifying their operations?
We are. They've, you know, they've seen, since the city took back over operations from the Airport Authority, we've gone in and we've added directional signs to those companies. We've done some landscaping coming into the park. We've been working with Steve Lotosky, County Public Works has been great with road improvements on the side. When we had the large rains that we had recently, it really came in, and you had a lot of debris on the road, and the county came in right away and got it cleaned up. Things like that have mattered, and the business owners have then been going in and cleaning up their properties and doing some landscaping. And so all around the park is really, we've seen a lot of improvements, and I would just offer that, if any of the supervisors would like to come out and tour the park, I'd be more than happy to get a tour and maybe get you into some of those businesses and those plants.
Are you aware of any other location within Mojave County that employs 2,000 people within, say, four square mile?
I am not.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Bradley, I have a question for you. I spoke to Bill and Bob Montgomery last month, and they were wanting to start up the flight school there again. It used to be Shelby Aviation, and prior to that, it was the Montgomery Flight School. They'd like to reopen that, and I believe Port Drive is one of the access roads that was so bad, the aviation from that business in past couldn't safely taxi their aircraft from that business to the taxiway and promote that business. Am I right on, and is this the road that joins that potential business?
Yeah, this would be the road that they have some hangers on, and they cannot, currently in its current condition, put planes on it. And so, and I don't believe in Mojave County, we are in need of a flight school, and if we have a group like that that's wanting to get up and going, I think that would be a real economic impact to be able to bring a flight school back.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Johnson, do you have anything?
The only thing is, I agree with Supervisor Gould, and this has been ongoing for years with me. The park was given to the city and then given to a private entity to run, which you replaced, but millions of dollars of lands have been sold there. The roads have not been kept up to shape. I have no problem supporting you people in getting a grant, but I will not support the county taking the roads in. That's just, there's money being made out there, and why to put it onto the taxpayers is beyond me. That's all, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bradley.
Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Gould, this is your item. Do you have anything further?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Absolutely.
My motion's going to admit the final statement in the recommended motion. So my motion is move to authorize the Chairman of the Board of Supervisors to sign the attached letter in support of the City of Kingman's 2019 Arizona Commerce Authority Economic Strength Grant, Project Grant for the purpose of the city improving portway between Olympic Way and Flightline Drive, comma, transport drive between Portway and Mojave Airport Drive, comma, and government way between Portway and Mojave Airport Drive in Kingman Airport Industrial Park.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and second. Madam Clerk, will you take the role?
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gould?
Yes.
Chairman Bishop?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. We'll now go on to our public hearing portion of the agenda. I'd like to open the public hearing, discussion on possible action, re-approve the appointment, or approve the adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2019-018. Mr. Walsh?
Yeah? Did you open?
Public hearing.
You have to do public hearing.
I thought I did, but...
Then you have to close it to continue.
Okay, so I opened the public hearing. I'm being told now I have to close the public hearing. And now, Mr. Walsh, would you like to speak to this? Thank you, Jenny.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Item 34 is a discussion on possible action for a rezone of assessed parcels 402-32-225 from AR Agricultural Residential Zone to a C2H Highway Commercial Zone to allow for an RV park development and possible indoor storage in the Beaver Dam vicinity of Mojave County. This item, let me pull it up here, was approved, was recommended by, or recommended for approval by unanimous vote by the Planning and Zoning Commission. We did receive a number of letters in opposition of the item, and I believe those, there was one that we got late Friday that was sent individually to the board members. So you should have all of those oppositions, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, does anyone have any questions? Supervisor Watson?
Yes, I do. Thank you. IT Department has some photos that I would like to show on a prior project. The reason I'm bringing this information as a prior project has to do with a trust factor that I have with the applicant. So if we could start that picture show, I'll catch up to that particular picture. Originally, the applicant for this piece of property had told us that it was going to be a convenience store and gas station. And if you'll, as you follow through on the pictures, it's now a Travel Plaza truck stop. Certainly within his rights, because if we gave him the C2 zoning on that, I'm sure he's going to be proposing other changes, but to me, it was somewhat like a bait and switch. And a number of the people in the community are a little upset, more than a little upset, because there's more to this project than what was originally anticipated. So this applicant now is making application for an RV park that is fairly close. As you can see, this is a residential area where you can see where it says Nikotara's. It's only about 100 yards from their property over there to the Travel Plaza. I can imagine that Mr. and Mrs. Nikotara are going to be a little bit upset when they see diesels, diesel rigs in the parking lot experiencing fumes from their engines for a great deal of time as they do when they're resting. The owner, Mr. Monty Holgram, I believe wasn't completely truthful with me at the time of the application. I'm a little bit concerned that his application for the RV parks in parcel number 402-32-225, parcel number 402-33-107, and again, parcel 402-33-107, to allow for the RV park development, given C2 zoning, we could end up with just about anything on those properties. So today, with the lack of trust in the applicant, I will be proposing items 34, 35, and 36 Thank you, Chairman.
Is that in the form of a motion?
You'll have to close the public hearing in order to do that, but, and each one separately, I believe.
Okay, so do you want to go on to 35 and 36?
I believe you'll have to close the public hearing and then do each one separately.
Chairman Bishop, she's already closed the public hearing for this one, so you can go ahead and make a motion, but then you should take them separately.
Okay, I'll make a motion, item number 34, to deny the zoning for parcel number 402-32-225.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Aye.
Okay, motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, item number 35, I'll open the public hearing, discussion on possible action, re- approve the adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2019-018. approve the adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2019-021, rezon of Assessor's Parcel Number 402-33-107. Supervisor Watson, I'll now close the open hearing, there are no speakers, and turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chairman. I'll make a motion to deny the rezon of Assessor's Parcel Number 402-33-107.
Okay, we have a motion and second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. I'll open the public hearing on item number 36, discussion on possible action, re-approve the adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2019-022, special use permit for Assessor's Parcel Number 402-33-107. I have no one signed up to speak on this, so I'll close the public hearing and... Okay, this is item 36. Did you want to speak on that?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't have a form filled out, but I'll recognize you if you'll give your name and address and...
My name is Jamani with Mojave Engineering. We have been the applicant on behalf of the owner for items 34, 35, and 36. The owner was supposed to be here, but for some reason, who could not make it to the meeting. And I didn't get an opportunity to talk on items 34 and 35, but since the owner just called me outside and he wanted to talk to the board, and I was wanting to ask you if the items 34, 35, and 36 can be tabled for the next meeting.
I'm sorry, we've already had a motion and it's been approved and we're now on item number 36.
Oh.
Yes, Supervisor Gould?
I believe we can reconsider our action either now or at a later date, which is the backstop to denying it.
Yeah. We just want to be able to get an opportunity. I mean, he was supposed to come, but for some reason, he had a medical emergency and could not make it. He called me outside and I just wanted to, so I just had a request if we were to be able to table this, so that gives us an opportunity and another extra month, you know, to talk, to address any issues the board or somebody else may have, you know?
Okay, it's my understanding if this proceeds forward, then the gentleman can get with the supervisors and ask that it be reconsidered and we can put it back on the agenda. That's my understanding. Mr. Ryan Esplin, he's our attorney and he can give an opinion on that.
Yes, it can be brought back to a future agenda item if the supervisor wishes to bring it back.
Okay.
So, is it the same as being tabled or is it different?
It's different, but it has the same results.
Oh, okay.
Madam Chairman.
I'm sorry, before Supervisor Gould speaks, if I could just double check as well, I think we'll have to send it back to the commission though first. Is that correct? Perhaps Chris Ballard could answer that? I can't remember on these if we asked to go back to the commission first.
Supervisor Bishop, members of the board, Mr. Esplin, the item would have to be, if the items are not reconsidered and continued to April, then when they are reconsidered by the board, they'll have to be read advertised.
But will they have to go back in front of the commission though first?
They don't have to go back. That is a decision the board has before them. If they wish to send them back, that is their discretion, but they don't have to go back.
It seems as if in the past, we would, anytime we denied something, they had to go back to the commission. I'm sorry, Madam Clerk?
Attorney Esplin, actually, the board could choose to, as long as they're on the prevailing side, a board member can choose to bring it back for reconsideration. We could advertise and have the public hearing again, but it doesn't have to go back to the, that's only been if it's denied and somebody re-applies, they go back through that process.
Okay, so then it'd be a reapplication process?
Well...
No, I know what you're saying. They can, any member of the board could bring back an item through reconsideration because all four voted to deny it. I also believe, and I've talked to Supervisor Johnson about this in the past, that any items can come back in the future. It's a disagreement that I have with previous practice, but we could talk about that at a different time. But if all four have denied it, then Madam Chair is, or Madam Clerk is absolutely correct. Anyone could bring it back for, on the reconsideration.
Correct. But I think Madam Chair, Ms. Ballard, they, somebody can't reapply. We're kind of given a false impression. It's what, a year before you can reapply? There's a time limit on, you know?
Madam Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Johnson, that is correct. When the board denies a rezon application or a special use permit, the applicant cannot bring back an application that is essentially the same as that that was denied for one year.
I just wanted to clarify that part.
My point was covered.
Go ahead, Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. My point was covered, that a member that voted on the prevailing side can bring the motion up for reconsideration. Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Watson?
Have you closed the public hearing?
I have not. So, if there's no other speakers, no other comments, discussion, I'll close the public hearing.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Chairman Bishop, I'm sorry, or Supervisor Bishop, I could just add one thing though to this, just while we're having this discussion, I understand that the rules of procedure here, that any member can bring back a reconsideration. That's what Supervisor Gould was talking about. The one thing that I don't know the answer to, and I think Supervisor Johnson's kind alluded to this, if we deny the application now and it takes one year to do a new application, it would be a runaround from that one-year requirement. Would that be allowed or not on a motion to reconsider? You see what I'm saying? You're getting around that one-year requirement. I don't know the answer to that, but if that's something that's a common practice that we've done in the past, I don't see why we couldn't, but I don't know the answer to it off, right here at this moment.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Madam Chair, Supervisor Gould will have to get a second and then have to get a majority vote to get it reconsidered, so, and then once you do that, it goes right back to the same agenda item that we had before, so we just move ahead if that comes up.
Sure, I mean, we could...
Somebody's gonna have to talk to Supervisor Watson.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. Madam Chair, if I may, I would like to go back to many years ago in my childhood, listening to a fable. And this young person was walking up from the desert to the mountains. And as he was walking, it was getting colder and colder and he came upon a snake. And the snake was saying, "I'm so cold, I'm so cold. Please pick me up, hold me, and walk me up the mountain." And so, the young man said, "Well, gosh, you know, here's a living thing and I need to do the right thing." So, he picked up the snake and put it in his pocket and walked up to the next highest level. And sure enough, the snake was getting warm and comfortable and so he took it out. As he took it out, the snake bit him. And the young man said, "Why did you do that?" And the snake said, "You knew I was a snake when you picked me up." I'm not going to go any further with that fable, but that shows you the trust that I have with this applicant. Thank you very much. I'll make a motion to deny special use permit.
Okay, we have a motion second to deny. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. And that's the end of our public hearings. We'll go on to the regular agenda at this time. Item number 37, discussion on possible action, re-acknowledge receipt and refer to public works, a petition to the Mojave County Board of Supervisors requesting that Interstate Way from Santa Fe Drive Southwest for .07 miles, number two, North Transport Drive from East Finance Way to East Portway, .315 miles, and number three, North Windrose Lane from East Santa Fe Drive Southwest to the Dead End, .13 miles, and number four, East Government Way from East Finance to East Portway, .15 miles. All in the Kingman Airport areas be accepted into the Mojave County Road System for regular maintenance, subject to meeting all applicable requirements and subsequent board approval. Okay, that's item 37. We do have several people that have signed up to speak on this item. Okay, Mr. Jengus, this is the item that you signed up to speak on. Give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Jengus Eric and I'm with 9,000 East Government Way. Good morning, Madam Chair, Supervisor Watson, Gould, and Johnson. I'm here today to speak on item number 37 in regards to Government Way from Finance to Port being accepted into the Mojave County Road System. My name is Jengus Eric and I'm with Import Corner. If you don't recognize me, I'm here to let you know that tucked away in the corner of the industrial park, there's a sprawling retail destination that sees about 1,000 vehicles per month from all across Mojave County and the state of Arizona. Import Corner is located at 9,000 East Government Way and we have been serving the tri-state area for almost 20 years now. In the past few years, we've come to represent imports from over 10 countries and are now the largest importer of Turkish mosaic lamps and ceramics in the country. We have a nation, we have nationwide wholesale accounts that send reps to shop through our huge showroom, which is also open to the public. We have regular customers from Kingman, Bullhead, Lake Havasu, Fort Mojave, Golden Valley, and everywhere far and in between. This is why I'm here today. We are growing and we plan to keep growing along with the rest of the industrial complex. This is also why it's not just our road. The other parts of this agenda item are a necessity for our neighbors in the airport community. Some examples of the companies that would be directly affected by this agenda item include Renegade Hoof Boots, Interstate Trailers, UPS, and many more. The roads in this proposal are built already. We're just asking for a maintenance plan to avoid the shame of letting them rot away. By granting clearance and supporting this proposal, we've been laying the groundwork and establishing the fact that our industrial complex is ready to grow and that it has an adamant city and county that's ready to support it. Thank you for taking the time to hear me out.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr.? Okay, thank you very much. Our next speaker is Bennett Bratley.
Bennett Bratley, 1650 Franklin Drive, Kingman, Arizona. Thank you for having us up here again on this. Roads are the arteries through which the economy pulses. By linking producers, markets, workers and jobs, students to schools, and the sick to the hospital, roads are vital to any municipality's economic development agenda. Road infrastructures and maintenance will be vital to the Kingman Industrial Park's ability to not only bring businesses, but to also retain those businesses. I kind of went over a lot of the numbers with you earlier, but I just want to hit on them again. Right now, we've got 2,205 full-time employees, 43 part-time, 246 temporary workers, and like I said earlier, that represents $101 million in yearly salaries. And that money gets reinvested in, back into the communities, back into Mojave County. So, you know, I just want you to consider voting yes on that. And if there are any questions, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Ratley?
Mr. Ratley?
Go ahead, Supervisor Watson.
Thank you, Chairman Bishop.
Yes, Supervisor Watson.
Mr. Ratley, you and I were at the airport on Friday.
Yes, correct.
And we rode those roads that we're talking about this morning.
Yeah, I wanted you to be able to take a look at them, correct.
They appeared to me to be in pretty good shape. I'm pretty sure that they were built to spec.
Correct.
Is that correct? So, any additional investment in those roads would be required by you for us to then accept them. If Mr. Lutowski has any recommendations for further upgrade, would the City of Kingman and the industrial park be able to make those upgrades?
We'd, I'd have to look and see if we had in the budget, depending on the amounts, but we would consider it, you know, as the park is very important, you know, based upon all those factors. So, yeah, we would consider it after looking at it, seeing what those numbers were, if there were any requirements at all. My hope would be that there would be no requirements because when you look at those roads, I think it would probably be pretty minimal if there's any at all.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
My next question is to Mr. Lutowski. Thank you. Morning, Mr. Lutowski.
Good morning, Supervisor Bishop, Supervisor Watson, members of the board.
Just a quick question concerning the roads on item number 37, North Interstate Way, Santa Fe, Transport, Finance, those roads appear to me to be within the acceptable limits of acceptance. Are there any roadways included in here that need additional improvement?
Supervisor Watson, the roads, Transport Drive and Government Way, I believe those would be the roads subject yet to the ACA grant improvement. The other roadways are just takeoffs from Santa Fe Boulevard and those roads would still be subject to Public Works' final inspection. We'll obtain the as-built plans and satisfy ourselves that the road structural section is constructed such that, given that they're just simply spur roads off of Santa Fe, that they be more than capable of providing adequate service life as per our adopted standards for pavement design. And I do stress that Mojave County has been always out in front of our peer agencies in the context of adopting, you know, not only engineering standards and specifications, but standards that are specific to the development of pavement structural sections, and they consider impacts such as heavy truck traffic. So, I just wanted to reference that because as we get back to Transport and Government Way, when those roads are improved in all likelihood with an asphalt, a concrete type improvement, we will ensure that the adequate design and thickness is provided for that addresses the level of truck traffic that can be reasonably expected, as well as passenger car traffic. But as we know, trucks exert a level of load about 200 times that of a passenger car vehicle. So, to answer your question Supervisor, right to the point, Public Works, this is an acceptance of referral, so if the application is basically palatable to the board, Public Works will then examine carefully from an engineering perspective, then bring back the recommendation, its recommendation to the board for final acceptance.
Thank you, Mr. Lutowski. According to my addition, I'm looking at less than a mile in the application on item number 37. Would that be correct?
Supervisor Watson, that is correct, yes.
Like somewhere around two-thirds of a mile?
Yes, yes, Supervisor Watson, that's pretty much right on the head.
Thank you, Mr. Lutowski.
Okay.
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Mr. Lutowski, don't walk away so soon.
My apologies.
Thank you, sir. These roads are currently not hard-surfaced roads?
Supervisor Gould, I believe that the roadways that take off from Santa Fe Parkway, which would be the Interstate Way, as well as the short segment of Windrose Lane, I believe those may be improved. We'll verify that. The other roadways are in a, I'll just label it dilapidated state, and I believe those are subject to a complete reconstruction under the contemplated ACA grant that the city is pursuing. And then the city would take responsibility to reconstruct those roadways according to standards.
Mr. Lutowski, who maintains those roads now?
Supervisor Gould, those roadways have not been accepted for maintenance, so as per Mojave County Resolution 2016-016, they aren't tertiary roadways either, so the public is, it's public right-of-way, but there would have to be a right-of-way use permit in general, you know, obtained if a private entity desires to improve those roadways or maintain them for that matter.
So, sir, to the best of your knowledge, the roads are not maintained by anyone?
Exactly. Supervisor Gould, I would ascertain that essentially, there's no entity that's going in right now maintaining those roadways.
Interesting. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Johnson?
Heck of an answer there, Mr. Lutowski, but isn't that inside the industrial park and isn't that part of the responsibility along with the sewer and the water and the roads?
Supervisor Johnson, as far as inferring City of Kingman responsibility, it would, again, lie at their pure discretion. again, lie at their pure discretion, should they wish to...
Not the City of Kingman, when they, you know, I'm not talking about the airport authority that's here today, I'm talking about the one that was here previously.
Right.
They were in charge of those roads with the money that they brought in. That was the deal when it was given over, because that was a tremendous asset that the county gave to the city, and then they ultimately gave away, and I'm glad to see now that they have it back and moving forward. But to say nobody did it, I mean, there was money collected, and that's supposed to be spent to fix those roads.
Right.
That's all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lutowski. I do have others that would like to speak. Mr. Kellogg from the City of Kingman.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, Gary Kellogg, twenty-seven ninety Paseo Dorado, Lake Havasu City. I am currently the Economic Development Director and Planning Director for the City of Kingman, and I guess I just want to reinforce Mr. Bennett's comments. We took over the airport on May third from ground zero, and if any of you have, as Supervisor Watson has seen, we've made tremendous improvements at the airport, cleaning it up, working with our tenants to clean up their property also. We're currently waiting on a final bid now to remodel the terminal to create a World War II-like atmosphere along near the restaurant, and we also went and received a grant to restore the tower. It's a very special airport with a World War II theme, and it would be a shame to let that theme escape us and really promote it that way. But in the case of these roads, the original thing, when the airport was brought over to Mojave County in nineteen seventy-nine, was that the FAA had certain regulations on it, and that was money was to be reinvested into the airport proper after the sale of property and stuff. I certainly can't speak to the past and why some of the road stuff didn't get done, but that's not the case now. What we are doing is making sure that we are bringing those roads up to snuff and then turning them over to the county, and I believe that's how the jurisdiction reads unless Mr. Hendricks can correct me, that that's the way it sits today, that they would become part of the county system. Just as a reminder of what Mr. Bratley said, it represents, you know, over a hundred million dollars worth of salaries, and currently, we have in the mix, and this will certainly be good for the county. If it comes to fruition, we have some companies right now that if their investment follows through, we'll add it very easily between three hundred and three hundred and fifty million dollars. It's our time again, that's our proximity certainly to California. So, what happens at that airport, not only is it good for the City of Kingman, it is good for Mojave County. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Any questions, comments? Okay, our next speaker is Mr.?
Mr.? I did want to...
Mr. Kellogg?
Did want to speak to that item.
Want to clarify the statement you made, and I believe I know the answer. The proceeds from the sale of industrial park property are for the improvements of the airport. Is that correct?
That is correct. Airport proper, yes, correct.
If you sell property on the industrial side, you can't reinvest that into infrastructure on that side. That money has to go into the airport side. Is that correct?
That's correct. That was supports the rebuild of the runway, the taxiways, et cetera. That was the FAA, it has to be done within five years.
Within five years?
Yes.
So, where would you get the money for infrastructure improvement, such as roads, water line extensions, those types of things?
Right now, that will come out of the operating thing. Under the original FAA agreement on the transfer of the property from the Department of Defense, there were two key items. Any land or buildings that are leased, that money goes back into the operating portion of, and is allowed to be used to operate the airport. Anything that is sold must be reinvested into the airport proper, so it would be the money that we have currently coming in from operations, i.e., for example, you know, some of the rent that is paid by Cassie, the large refurbisher at the airport, Mr. Watson.
Well, let's see if my memory is correct. The airplanes that are stored at the airport generate in the neighborhood of about sixty-three thousand dollars a month, is that correct?
Between sixty-three and seventy thousand, yes.
Right. So, those monies are used to pay your staff and other incidental items, is that correct?
General maintenance and upkeep, correct.
General maintenance and upkeep.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Would that be enough money to do any infrastructure improvements? Doesn't sound like a lot of money to me.
Well, Supervisor Watson, we actually, when we get to the end of this budget year, we will know, because this will be the first year that we will, as a City of Kingman, have the opportunity to actually review the full operating incomes that are coming in. But that's kind of what we're doing right now. There was some money left over from before, from the other group, but as you know, it got tied up in litigation, you know, and so we're waiting on whatever comes out of that money, but that's how we operate it today, yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Kirk Lander. Could you give us your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Kurt Lander. I'm at nine thousand Transport Road. I've been a resident of Mojave County and business owner for more than twenty-five years. Currently, I'm the owner and president of Lander Industries, Inc., a manufacturing company I started in my garage here in Mojave County more than ten years ago. From its humble beginnings, today we employ twenty-five people where we manufacture and distribute the Renegade line of hoof boots for horses, where seventy percent of our production is exported all over the world. Four and a half years ago, when we decided it was time to expand, we started looking around the southwest for a so-called better place. Interestingly, we found there was no better place than right here in the area of Kingman, where we purchased a sixteen thousand square foot building on almost five acres at the airport industrial park. Looking to the future, my company has aspirations for growth. Internally, as part of our hoof boot production, we have a three-man, seven-machine computerized machine shop. Building on the experience of the machine shop, we are interested to expand into the aerospace market, machining high-value aerospace parts, where return on machine time and man hours invested will support higher employee wages and improve profitability for the company. Said expansion, should it be successful, could support an additional twenty-five or more well-paying jobs over the next five years. Expanding the company will require the construction of more manufacturing space. Currently, our facility is accessed by Transport Road, Government Way, and Port Way, all of which are in substandard condition, with portions of these roads having deteriorated into Jeep roads, especially Port Way. As you might imagine, customers looking for aerospace machine shops are rather picky about the quality of facilities they select. Not only is the quality of the facility important, but also the surrounding environment where the facility resides. In recent times, I've been working diligently on my private pilot's license, flying to airports all around the southwest. Every time I land back here in Kingman, I am reminded of just how fortunate we are to have such a wonderful airport and adjacent industrial park, though admittedly, it's a little bit of a diamond in the rough. Members of the board, I think it's time to polish the diamond up a bit, and I encourage you to move forward with the adoption of various roads in the park into the Mojave County Road Maintenance System. Thank you for your time. I'd also like to make another comment, and this is from a business owner, and I'm also a licensed general contractor. Time's up, or?
You can go ahead and finish.
What's that?
You can go ahead and finish, just make it fast.
There seems to be a little bit of confusion over who owns the roads. From an owner, from a property owner perspective, I see it as the City of Lake Havasu owns the airport within Mojave County, outside of the city limits. The roadways I see as being owned by Mojave County, in Mojave County, not in the City of Kingman, and that's the way I view it, and I always expected road maintenance issues to be handled by Mojave County, not expecting that to be a city situation. So, to me, it seems pretty clear. You have the airport owned by the city, you have various parcels that are available for future growth owned by the city, but the roadways and infrastructure there too clearly is Mojave County. Anyway, that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
I don't have any questions, but in Havasu, the city pays for the airport, we, the county maintains no roads outside of it, but the point you're making is the city is, like you said, sells the land, gets the profits, and then gives it to the county to do the infrastructure. That's the problem, you know. And no matter how they do it, you know, we can argue over where the money goes, that's just a problem that's been there. It's always been the Kingman Industrial Park, Air Park, whatever it's called out there, you know, so that's where my problems come in from. This has been going on for the whole time I've been on the board, the arguments over, and nothing's been taken care of, and hopefully the city's stepping forward now to do it, but it seemed like they've stepped forward and just pushed it on us, because we have spent money on air park roads out there in the past, you know, the entryway and all that.
Right.
That was, not arguing, just pointing out that.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Lander, and good luck on your expansion.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Marvin Taylor. Could you name an address for the record, please?
Marvin Taylor. The business location is forty-four thirty Santa Fe Drive, sits on the corner of Windrose and Santa Fe. The company's name is Chromescap. In fact, actually, when I got the word on this, I had no idea that those roads weren't even in the maintained area. They are paved. I have currently approximately fifteen to twenty semi-trucks a day go in and out of our facility, taking loads throughout the country. Last year, we did over twenty-one million pounds of the product that we make and shipped out. I currently have on my payroll, my benefits, over half million dollars for the employees that I have there. So, it was kind of a surprise that it wasn't maintained. If they're not maintained, then we can't bring these trucks in and out to move that. We also employ five of the local trucks, not the large ones, but small mom and pops to haul our product as well, so we try to impact the local economy there also. So, I would recommend that we try to bring that in. We pay property taxes, that property tax goes strictly to the county only, so, and it's a pretty good chunk of change. So, I would just ask you guys to please put those on the road to maintain. They're actually in pretty good shape. I don't see any issues with the one on Windrose, but if they don't get maintained, we all know what happens to roads if they're not maintained. And as to Mr. Gould, Supervisor Gould, I have not, my confusion as to how everything happened, and Mr. Johnson, with the airport and how it's transcribed and everything else is, I could never figure it out, so. But I just ask that if we please accept those, if they meet the standards of the county, that we do that. Thank you. Any questions?
Okay, thank you. I'd like Mike Hendricks to give us a little history lesson here, if you would.
Madam Chair, if I may, this is just to take these in, we're getting kind of far afield on all the stuff we're doing, you know.
I agree, it's going a little bit past, but, you know, there's been questions about how did this happen, and?
But, I mean, it's just to refer this to the commission, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Madam Chairman, no, it's a standard petition for, that we received to, you know, consider accepting roads for maintenance, so generally, the board will acknowledge these petitions and then refer them to staff so that the staff can evaluate the conditions, and then that information will be brought back to the board for your consideration. So, you're not approving anything, all you're doing is referring this particular petition to the staff to evaluate, and it's a standard procedure that we go through. And as for the history of the airport, there are some documents that would shed light on some of the conditions and what happened. I think there was a, the original transfer was something that the county believed was in its best interest back in the old, old days, and the city accepted it, and like Supervisor Gould said, and Supervisor Johnson said, they formed an airport authority to actually manage the airport, and there's conditions on what monies that were received from the properties could be used for. And there was a point in time where there's really no good mechanism to accept roads for maintenance, and I believe it was back in Supervisor Byers' time that we believed that it was in the best interest of Mojave County to actually identify roads that could be maintained, that were in some sort of standard, and go ahead and accept those into the county road maintenance system. And there was a good, solid roadway infrastructure that the county actually accepted in one fell swoop. We made them county highways and then accepted them for maintenance, and with the understanding that if we were going to accept any new roads for maintenance, that those roads would be brought up to county standards at no cost to the county, our regular process, and then evaluated by the county, and the board may look to accept those roads for maintenance. And I believe that's what's happened here. I believe that some of the roads that are being suggested because of the airport authority, we never got the original plans and got the, through the approval process, to look at how these roads were constructed, and they're asking us to accept them after the fact. I'm not saying that's all the roads, but I know that there's a group of roads in there that we were always waiting for them to bring forward, and it never did happen, so this is somewhat after the fact. I hope that helps, Supervisor, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, I'll enter a motion. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Mr. Hendricks, do we have any idea what the cost is to have our staff evaluate these roads?
Supervisor, Madam Chairman, Supervisor Gould, we could call on Steve. I don't think the cost is great, we don't go into a lot of depth. Steve Lutowski's, you know, a master at road structures and what's necessary, and all I can say is that for a nominal cost, he'll be bringing back a good, solid recommendation to the board on what would be necessary to bring him back to county, or bring him up to county standards based on the amount of traffic, semi-truck traffic that occurs on those roadways, and it should be pretty solid, and I always find that his recommendations and his knowledge of road structure and maintenance is probably better than anybody's in this area.
And I agree with you on that.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have one more question.
Supervisor Watson.
Mr. Bratley. Good morning, again.
Again.
From an economic development standpoint, can you measure in dollar value two thousand jobs available for Mojave County?
That's a very good question. One of the projects that I'm working on right now is economic development analysis of the park and those jobs. So, I just listed off the first set of those numbers. The consultant's going to take all that information back. We will have that report done in March, and I'll be able to present that to the county, to the city, as to that impact of those jobs, of the tax revenues that are brought in, and what that impact is to the county, to the school districts, everyone.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Just have one other statement to make, if I could, Chairman. It appears to me that any investment that Mojave County can make in the industrial park, which would be a small and limited amount of investment, we'll get that report if item number thirty-seven is approved today, to enhance the ability of the industrial park to entice other people to come in. I recall that we made an investment with the DOT Foods that is being paid back, and that's an incredible addition to the Bullhead City area. Economic development-wise, I think this is a good decision to make. We're not making the final decision today, and so with that, I would like to make a motion to acknowledge the receipt and refer to Public Works, a petition to Mojave County Board of Supervisors requesting that, number one, North Interstate Way from East Santa Fe Drive, southwest, for point oh seven miles; number two, North Transport Drive from East Finance Way to East Port Way, point three one five mile; and number three, North Windrose Lane to East Santa Fe. East Portway, .315 mile; and number three, North Windrose Lane to East Santa Fe, southwest to a dead end at .13; and number four, Government Way from East Finance Way to East Portway, .15 mile, all in the Kingman area, being accepted into the Mojave County road system for regular maintenance, subject to meeting all applicable requirements. And that is my motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have any discussion or a second?
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Gould.
Yeah, if you, earlier in the conversation, somebody said that we were not accepting these roads into the maintenance program, but if you look at the plain language of this motion, it says we're accepting them.
I...
I'm assuming we get another bite at the apple, provided that, that no one wants to bring these roads up to standards, but to say that we are not accepting them, that's clearly untrue.
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Gould, I think that's an excellent point that you just made, because in reading that, right after, if you read the .15 miles, in accordance with the powers that the board has, once this information is brought forward, it's not an automatic, that should say, "All in the Kingman Airport may, may be accepted for maintenance." It should be a "may" or some sort of language in that regard, so that you all have flexibility at the very end on what you want to do.
Madam Chairman, I would like to make a substitute motion.
I can amend mine.
Supervisor Watson, go ahead.
I'll amend my motion on item number 37 to exclude the last sentence, where at the end of .15 miles, comma, and exclude "all in the Kingman Airport area be accepted in Mojave County road system for regular maintenance, subject to a, meeting all acceptable requirements and subject to board approval." I will eliminate that last portion of that last sentence.
Okay, motion's been clarified.
Madam Chairman, I don't believe that that motion instructs staff to do anything.
And I agree. That's the problem. I think the way it's written, for lack of a better word, it's a run-on sentence. What they're doing is they're acknowledging receipt, referring to the Public Works petition, and then the last part of what they intend to do with it is that last clause there, "be accepted into the Mojave County road system." So Supervisor Gould's problem is, we are accepting it into the road system, which we are not, that's not the purpose of this, and that last line here, "subject to meeting all applicable requirements and subsequent board approval." And that's a key part, because we want to make sure that this comes back and that the board votes on it to determine whether to approve it or not. Am I correct, Supervisor Gould and Watson, that's what you guys intended?
You are correct. I'll, I'll withdraw my motion.
I think if we put the "may" in there, we can, we can fix that. So, "all in the Kingman Airport area may be accepted into the Mojave County road system for regular maintenance, subject to meeting all applicable requirements," and if you want to add, if you want to be more assurance, "and bringing back to the board for subsequent board approval." If you want to add that language in there, that would help make it very clear to everyone that we are bringing it back to the board.
Supervisor Watson, do you want to clear that up?
I'll, I'll give it another shot of that. Referring to item number 37, of which I've just read, I would like to add, in the third sentence, "all in the Kingman Airport area may be accepted into the Mojave County road system for regular maintenance, subject to meeting all acceptable requirements, subject to board approval." Will that...
So, you didn't want to add the additional clause that I suggested? I mean, if you want to add an additional clause after, so in between the words "and" and "subsequent," put "and bring back to the board for subsequent board approval." If you want to make it clear, you don't have to.
I believe that that is in there. "requirements and subsequent board approval" is already contained.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Second. I'm just trying to...
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I'll ask for the clerk to call for the vote.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
No.
Supervisor Gould?
No.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
We have a tie vote, so it does not carry.
No.
Okay. We'll go on to the next item, number 38. Discussion on Possible Action, refer to staff to bring back within 30 days a cost of building a regional sheriff's substation, medical examiner's office, and animal control facility in the vicinity of I-40 and Exit 9. So Supervisor Johnson, I believe this is your item, if you want to take the floor?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. You've all seen the backup. Nothing new. We've brought it up before and talked about it, but as the quarter cent sales tax was running down, I thought I'd bring it back, see if there's any interest in finishing this, as it'd kind of be the last piece of our puzzle for all the new buildings that we needed. So, that's why I brought it up.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Any comments?
A question for Supervisor Johnson, if I could.
Yes, go ahead.
I can certainly appreciate trying to finish the last piece of the puzzle. Where do you intend on seeking the funds for the, for those projects?
If the board was interested in going back, it'd obviously be a board decision, possibly the extension of the quarter cent sales tax for a year, year and a half until our term ends, so that this board would still be in charge of it, to pay that off.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your interest and wanting to enhance the sheriff's capabilities and also the animal welfare program. Would that include...
I think it would save us money, you know, because we, convenience of scale, and then, I believe the sheriff, a lot of, with the impounds they did, especially with boats and stuff, I know they don't have a lot of room and, and security facilities, so with going with the BLM land or something like that, we could secure enough land to have a secure facility for all those people.
Great idea. Thank you very much.
Okay. Since there is no further discussion that I can see, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. I'll second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Item 39 is brought to us by Supervisor Angus. Discussion on Possible Action, Ray approved the nomination of Susan McAlpine for appointment to the Bureau of Land Management Wild Horse and Borough Advisory Board. So, since Supervisor Angus is not here, I can state that Supervisor Watson and I have both individually and together tried to further miss McAlpine's interest in being appointed to this board, so maybe the third time is a charm.
Hopefully so. Madam Chairman, it'd be my pleasure to make a motion to approve the nomination of Susan McAlpine for appointment to the Bureau of Land Management Wild Horse and Borough Advisory Board.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item and last item on the agenda is item number 40. Discussion on Possible Action, Ray approved the immediate repair of the Channel 4 repeater located on Mount Perkins at an estimated cost of $53,766.11 to be paid out of the general fund contingency. Sheriff Doug Schuster. Good morning.
Well, good morning Supervisor Bishop, distinguished members of the board, Mr. Epsom, Mr. Hendricks, and of course, Madam Clerk. We ran into a little snag. We have a sophisticated radio system throughout the county. It relies on repeaters to transmit signals in the remote areas to our main hub dispatch center here in Kingman. Currently, the District 4 repeater, which is located on Perkins Mountain, has been failing. It's been monitored for about six months now. It has gotten to a point where it has failed, and it is due for replacement. I have no expert on the radio system. I would like to offer up Lieutenant Tim Sonier, who coordinates for our department, should you have any questions regarding this. It does need to be repaired.
Okay, thank you.
Can I clarify?
Mr.?
Sure. He wants to clarify.
Lieutenant Sonier, go ahead.
The way this is written is, is for the most... Channel 4 repeater is down. It is housed in a National Park Service building, and we have no control over its site or the maintenance of it. We just have a repeater there. National Park Service is working to get it repaired, but it's $300,000 to repair the site. This proposal is intended to basically add another radio channel to that area until this, to help cover, because we can't do anything with this one. Our equipment is up. The power system has failed. We want to put a radio tower in the Dolan Springs area and house it in a county-owned facility, and this, this is what this is for. The $53,000 is to put a repeater and an antenna and the connections to our dispatch in the Dolan Springs area, due to the failing site at Perkins.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Supervisor Watson?
I just heard 53 million, or 53,000...
53,000, if I remember right.
Why is it 300?
Two different radio sites. Perkins, the Mount Perkins, currently, we have a repeater there, is owned and maintained by the National Park Service. Their estimate to repair their facility, which we're in, is $300,000, because we can't do anything at that site to bring our system up and running.
Is that part of the wilderness area?
It's actually on a mountaintop. The main reason the cost is so high is everything has to be flown in.
Helicopter it up?
Yeah, and the cost is borne on the National Park Service.
Right.
We all know what's going on with the federal budget, so expected, anything getting done on that in the near, the long-term future is a question.
So, you can solve the problem for $53,000?
I can get, according to our radio techs, we com, we can get an operable system that will cover the areas we need covered right now, today, for the 53,000, whatever's listed in here.
Is this a Band-Aid, or will this cure the problem?
This will cure the problem that we have, and will add an additional channel if Perkins ever comes back up.
Thank you. Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Johnson?
Finance is not jumping in, I take it, but I guess I'll ask Mistress, or Lieutenant Sonier. You've got $87,000 in your communications equipment. How come you're taking it out of my pocket?
I have $87,000 in it. I had in my budget 30,000 to, in case we have emergencies, and up to this point, I think I've spent maybe 2,000 of it. I don't know of an 87,000.
Item 48, 520, communications equipment, 87,462. You spent none, or nothing's encumbered?
Yeah. I mean, we have to fix it, there's no doubt that, you know...
Supervisor Johnson, let me take this one. I know a lot of the funding in that budgeted item has been accounted for, for issues that are pending, but I agree 100%, it needs to be fixed. Whatever we can put forward out of our existing budget, of course, we will do that. I just don't want to spend money that's already been accounted for but has yet to be spent.
Yeah, that was all.
Supervisor Gould, did you have a comment?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chairman. So Sheriff, this, currently, you have no communication with your officers that are normally using that repeater?
Supervisor Gould, that's correct, and that is the only repeater that we can transmit in District 4, which is the Dolan Springs area on, so we are out of communications completely in Dolan Springs, so we're trying to reach additional towers, and depending on area, you might get through, but it's, it's becoming very problematic.
Okay, so our guys are out in the middle of nowhere with, with no radio communication, then?
That's correct.
Okay. Would you have any objection to us making the motion that we take the money out of your communications budget and the balance be taken from the general fund?
I do not have any objection.
Thank you, sir.
One, one question. Is the media area still covered with the, with the repeater?
Yes, we're, we still have adequate coverage in media.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
Supervisor Gould.
Let's see, I have to reword this. I move that item 40 be adopted with a change to, following paid out of the sheriff's communication fund, and the balance coming from the county general fund contingency.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Get to use your money first.
All right. That concludes our meeting this morning. Thank you all for coming. Adhere.